Welcome to the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County Primary Candidate Forum for Lakewood City Council Positions Two, Three, and Five. Position One is uncontested. I am Liz Knox, the moderator, and on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our community sponsors, I welcome the candidates and audience to this community candidate forum. The League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County acknowledges that we gather on the ancestral lands of the Coast Salish peoples surrounded by their traditional waters in the shadow of Mount Tacoma. We actively seek inclusive and respectful partnerships that honor indigenous cultures, histories, identities, and current realities. The League of Women Voters is a nonpartisan organization whose mission for the past 101 years has been to empower informed and active participation of citizens in government. Candidate forums are one of the many ways we do this. Anyone 16 or older can be a member of the League of Women Voters. For more information on membership, go to our website www.tacoma-pierce-lv.org. The candidates in ballot order are for Lakewood City, Council Position Two, Mike Branstadter and Amelia Isabel Escobedo. For Position Three are Jason Whalen and Seabon Ayuse. And for Position Five are Patty Bell and Rhea Jackson. Seabon Ayuso is unable to join us tonight. And it appears Isabel Escobedo also may be unable to join us. This year's general election is November 2nd. You will receive your ballot during the week of October 17th if you are a registered voter. If you are not yet registered or have moved, you may register at vote.wa.gov by October 25th. Your ballot must be postmarked or placed in a ballot drop box by 8:00 PM on November 2nd. This forum is being recorded and will be posted at the League of Women Voters Tacoma Pierce County website www.tacoma-pierce-lv.org. Questions have been prepared by members of the League of Women Voters of Tacoma Pierce County and our co-sponsoring organizations. We invite live audience questions via text to this number 253-948-6029. Once again, 253-948-6029. Questions must be directed to all candidates and may be reworded or consolidated. Our timekeeper today is Terri Baker of the League of Women Voters. She will hold up cards to let candidates know when they have 60 seconds remaining, 30 seconds, 15, and when it is time to stop. When you see the stop card, you may finish a short sentence. Please stay on gallery view so that you can see me and the timekeeper, Terri Baker. Please do not talk unless it is your turn. Please mute yourselves when it is not your turn to speak. The audience is on mute and cannot use the chat function. A reminder that civility is expected. I ask you each to confirm that you agree to our ground rules, which among other things include addressing the issues and not making personal attacks. Please confirm by giving a thumbs up now. I'm seeing thumbs up from all the candidates.
And could the candidates please mute when you're not talking?
Each candidate has up to two minutes for an opening statement. After that, the order of questions will rotate and each candidate will be asked the same question. At the end, each candidate can make a one-minute closing statement. So the order, the opening two-minute statements in ballot order begins with Mike Branstadter. Mike, would you please give your opening statement?
Thank you, and thank you to the League of Women Voters for hosting this forum. It's particularly important to have forums of this time while we're in a time of when there's not as much face-to-face, in-person interaction. I'm a candidate for reelection, but I'm not a candidate for the status quo. During my 12 years on the council, I've been looking at being an advocate for positive change in our community and tend to continue to do that. I think that the way that you go about doing that is you commit to the time and the energy to study issues and make sure that you understand them both from your perspective, but also from the broad perspective of the community. And I pledge to continue to do that, and I'm looking forward to this evening's forum. Thank you.
Thank you. And our next candidate, Jason Whalen. Your opening statement, please.
Well, thank you very much. Thanks to the League of Women Voters and thanks to you, Liz, for moderating. I appreciate this opportunity to seek reelection to Position Three here in the Lakewood City Council. I have served for 12 years on the city council, eight of which as deputy mayor. And I'm proud to say that when we look back at Lakewood's 25th anniversary, which we just celebrated, we recall that the promise of Incorporated for our city were to increase and sustain public safety for the city, to enhance our infrastructure through street and sidewalk improvements that would integrate and connect families to the community services, and to enhance our parks and recreational opportunities and facilities. I can tell you with a great pride that our team on the city council, not just the three of us that are here tonight, but our forebears, have kept those promises to the community. But more work needs to be done, and we recognize that. And like Mr. Branstadter, we're not running on a status quo platform. We're running on a progress platform. We have made great progress in this city, and we are committed to making even greater progress as we turn to our next 25 years as Incorporated City. As a candidate, I am the only candidate in the race that is a business owner, who's a military veteran, who has significant community experience doing the work in the city of Lakewood, and by way of affirmation, has received very positive endorsements, not only from my fellow council members from the News Tribune, and most recently from the Black Collective, of which I'm very proud. So I look forward to answering the questions tonight. I look forward to serving this community for another four years, and I thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And next we'll hear from Patty Bell.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters for handling this forum tonight. I'm very honored to be here. I just, I find all of this very exciting and fascinating. And one of the best things that I've heard about me in this seat, which I was appointed to in March, I was up against 15 other people, and I just think that it was such an honor to come through and be able to serve. But what I've heard a lot is that, so here's a direct quote from the News Tribune, "As we see it, Bell could be the bridge between the accomplished old guard and a well-rounded new generation of leaders." And that's what I really consider myself, is learning from, sorry, Jason, Mike, the old guard, but they have so much wisdom, so much knowledge. They have already taught me so much, and what I'm bringing to it is that I do come from a government agency. I'm a communications manager for the sixth largest city in Washington State. I work for the mayor's office, so I know government, I know council, but I also bring a fresh new perspective on it. And I'm just very honored to bring all of my communications information that I, to the table, talk about transparency, talk about all of the things that we want to do for our family. I'm a mother of a 10-year-old, and I'm just very honored to be here today and to represent the city and looking for everybody's support for Position Number Five. So thank you very much.
Thank you. And now, Rhea Covington-Johnson. Oops, I think you're muted, Rhea.
Whoa, talk about, you think we've done enough Zooms to know. But no, thank you kindly for having me here today, League of Women's, for hosting the debate. Ms. Bell, it's an honor to be able to have a person like you in the seat. And Mike and Jason, congratulations, Jason, on your endorsement from the Black Collective. Mike, of course, your, just your input on the council is definitely well-received and well-earned. My name's Rhea Johnson-Covington. I'm running for Position Number Five. We talk about building bridges. We talk about being that bridge. I am, you know, a public servant. I always have been. Many of our community members know me because of my service. It may not, I do not have the background of experience of 20, 40, 60 years, but I definitely bring something to the table that our community could use and be an asset too. And so that's what I'm seeking your vote for, is just that opportunity and that privilege to be at that table on your behalf. I've been in Lakewood. I'm a homeowner. I work in Seattle for a law office. And I do many other things, but this is just one additional thing that I'm seeking because I believe you deserve my time and effort on behalf of the community.
Thank you. Thank you all. And now we come to the questions. Each candidate gets up to 90 seconds to answer each question. Again, the live audience can text questions to this number 253-948-6029. That's 253-948-6029. And the questions have to apply to all candidates. The candidate order will rotate with each question so that for Question One, we will start with Jason. Here's the question. "One of the core values named by the current council is equitable delivery of municipal services. Name at least one example of what this means to you and what service or services might be changed to be more equitable." Jason?
Well, thank you very much for the question. I believe that the equitable delivery of municipal services requires us to consider how we deploy the resources here in Lakewood to those that perhaps need them the most. And I consider the concept of equity as everyone deserves the right to look over the fence of opportunity. Some of us might need a little bit of a stepping stone to be able to see over the fence, but everyone deserves to look over and enjoy the opportunity on the other side of the fence. And what does that mean in terms of Lakewood? We have invested heavily in census tracts in this city that have traditionally been lower-income, underserved, and minority-population census tracts, those in Springbrook, Northeast Lakewood, and certainly in Telecom. That has translated into expansion of significant infrastructure facilities into those census tracts, including sewer, roads, sidewalk, and other lighting improvements. Moreover, we have invested heavily in our parks and recreational facilities in those census tracts, predominantly serving our lower-income and minority populations. If you look at Springbrook Park, it has dramatically improved from what it was 10 and even 12 years ago. Perry Todd Park has seen ADA improvements that has not seen since incorporation 25 years ago. And in Wordslake Park, we have, again, additional beautiful park facilities that are serving those who deserve extra service and an opportunity to see over the fence of opportunity like all the other populations in Lakewood. We're a diverse city, and I think we do a good job of expanding services equitably.
Thank you. And Patty, same question.
Can you repeat it again, though?
Absolutely. "One of the core values named by the current council is equitable delivery of municipal services. Name at least one example of what this means to you and what service or services might be changed to be more equitable."
Okay. Well, definitely one of the highlights, and I think that this is an equitable service that needs to be looked at, and this is altogether would be translation services. We need to reach everybody, all of our residents, no matter what language they speak or where they're coming from. So besides translations, this also has to do with how we communicate. So we want to put out icons, artwork, things that people don't specifically need the words for. So that is an area that I do think that the city could improve on, and I know that they're working towards, would be communicating in multiple languages, closed captioning, looking at all of those kinds of things for meetings, for printed material, for signage, really just any sort of communication about how you can get those resources. And so just putting that out there and starting with translations will be the most valuable thing for people to get all of the resources that they need and to bridge that gap.
And Rhea, what services or service might be changed to be more equitable?
That is such a tough question, but I'm gonna go with what I feel is the center of it, and that would be police services. When I hear that question, I think of how can our community feel appreciated regardless of their income level? And when I think of police department, I know ours is, has work to do. We appreciate them. There's great programs like, you know, the collaboration with mental health, with the police department, and our chief is very open to, you know, cultural shifts within. So that way, we could actually bridge the gap between what we want and what we're currently experiencing. And I think honestly, that's really the first thing that we really have to pay attention to since there's such a divide within our community about it. And so that definitely would probably be the number-one core value of equity within city services.
Thank you. And Mike, same question. What service or services might be changed to be more equitable?
I think in the current environment that we have, the COVID pandemic has impacted the different areas of our community very differently, and there need different things to emerge from them. So there's not one COVID recovery strategy that works for all segments of the community. And it's also they're all not being provided by the city. So I think that we have to really strive over the next two years to make sure that we are that resource for everyone in the community to find what it is that they individually need to emerge from this time and take advantage of all the opportunities and things that are there. And then to be a good partner to help people take advantage of opportunities that are available and make sure that they're available in all our neighborhoods and comprehensively throughout the community.
Thank you. Our next question. "What should the city of Lakewood's priorities be for the growth management plan?" And for this, we'll start with Patty.
So our priorities for the growth management plan, I think focusing on transportation, just right there alone, and that also does hit back with equity because when you have all the different forms of transportation, it just spreads out. If people can get to where they need to go, it breaks down so many barriers. And when you start with your transportation system, which we are working on the multi-module transportation plan right now, so I think that that's great. We have great relationships with Sound Transit, which is another positive. But that starts as a really good base for economic growth because then you can bring in all of your different multi-use areas for housing, for retail, for just getting around and making everything accessible. Accessibility is really the key. And once everything's accessible to all, it crosses a lot of things off the list and opens up the doors.
Thank you. And next, Rhea, the priorities for the growth management plan.
So two priorities come to the top of my mind. Of course, that's housing, and of course, that's employment, but just with a little bit more intentionality. What I mean by that is housing, I believe in homeownership. So maybe not necessarily 100-unit apartment complexes, but something that someone could build and set roots in this or in this community. So townhomes, duplexes, something that we're known for in Lakewood. I think that we really got to look at that. It may not, oh, Habitat for Humanity. You see examples like Habitat for Humanity growing in Telecom. That's a great step forward. Things like Shalashan, where there's mixed homes, rentals, homeownership. We really got to change how people look at their current living situations and put them on a path towards financial stability. And I think one easy way to do that, easy example would be, you know, Habitat for Humanity, just that whole concept in itself. Employment, employment's great. We really have to, you know, we talk about building our reputation here in Lakewood, but it also starts with the type of employers that we encourage here. And I'll probably touch base if you guys talk about Western State, but employers that are intentionally hiring are citizens. We, you know, we're walkable. We have sidewalks. We don't necessarily need a full-on, you know, train system in the middle of Lakewood, but that's something that I would say would be priority.
Thank you. And Mike, your priorities for the growth management plan?
Well, I think in the city, what we need to recognize is that everywhere in the city doesn't really need to develop in exactly the same way. But we do have to prepare for a growth in population, and that means we have to prepare for a growth in residential density. And we need to decide what that looks like, set some standards for it. And then using the subarea planning process, come up with areas that are encouraging and are incentivizing to developers to build the housing that we need, but also to build the commercial assets that we need that'll provide for that employment. I think we've started on that. We have two subarea plans already. We're going to be working on a revision of the plan for Telecom and for the International District. And those are the, you know, with sound planning, we can have those areas develop robustly for the future.
Thank you. And Jason, priorities for the growth management plan?
Well, thank you. I start the question and the answer with, we've got to recognize that we are a growing community. The South Sound is growing dramatically. And Lakewood from the 2020 census now exceeds 63,000 residents, which is a 5% increase over the last census. We have been told by the Pierce County Regional Council and the Puget Sound Regional Council that we must now plan for growth, which will exceed the allocation for Lakewood as 78,000 to 80,000 residents by 2040. And as you've heard from Mike and Patty, that translates into we have to meet certain goals by way of good planning, but for both housing targets as well as employment targets. And we're doing that through the subarea planning process that Mike alluded to, both for the Central Business District, the Lakewood Station District that we just completed last year for the subarea planning process, and soon to come, the Lakewood Landing area along I-5. Through these planning processes, we have identified and will promote and support the construction of hundreds of additional housing units, which will be fantastic, as well as good economic development opportunities so that the jobs and housing balance remains solid in Lakewood as well as within the entirety of South Sound. I am pleased to say that I've been there in these planning processes. I serve on the Pierce County Regional Council. I was chair and a member of the Economic Development Board for Tacoma Pierce County for over six years, and I also serve as a commissioner for Pierce Transit. So experienced leadership is what we need to effectively plan for growth in Lakewood and Pierce County.
Thank you. And our next question, we'll start with Rhea for this one. "How will you ensure that there is affordable housing for all income levels in Lakewood?"
Best way I could ensure is to keep talking, keep trying, keep persisting, keep raising those questions, keep bringing it to the table, keep telling them how much money people that I know have available. You know, I know people that have homes. I know people who are homeless. And so I think that really brings a different perspective to the conversation when it's the people that you know personally. How will I ensure it? You know, vote for me, put me in this seat. And that's how I'll ensure that I'll speak up for you guys.
Mike?
Well, affordable housing is a question that runs across a variety of spectrums. I think that, first of all, the majority of the households in Lakewood are renters. And the city has instituted a rental housing safety program, the goal of which is to make sure that affordable housing is also safe and quality housing. But that, through that, it's not just building new housing that would be more expensive. It's maintaining the housing stock that the city has that makes Lakewood the most affordable place to rent in the Incorporated areas of Pierce County. Additionally, we need to begin to foster some middle-income housing opportunities for homeownership. And previously mentioned Habitat for Humanity has been a good partner that we have done some revisions to our subdivision and plating processes where we've seen in the last several years, some increases in that, what, housing for purchase being done, and we need to continue to keep our eye on that and work on it.
Thank you. Jason?
Well, thank you very much. I think the first thing we need to recognize is the good work that the League of Women Voters has done to promote and educate all of us policymakers on the housing issues and the need for more affordable housing, and to look at tools to add to our tool bag. I'm pleased to report that Lakewood has joined the South Sound Housing Affordability Consortium as a key player in that, and that, as you know, is going to be working to look at regional solutions to the housing issue and affordability. But in terms of how we ensure affordability of housing for all in Lakewood, it is a work in progress. I can say it starts with good planning. We've already discussed the subarea planning processes that are in place and have taken place. And we also need to ensure that we've got adequate incentives so that the private market is willing to come and invest and develop housing in Lakewood. The multifamily tax credit incentive has been good for Lakewood. We have had several projects completed and more on the way that are going to increase not just housing, but affordable housing, where 20% of the units must be and meet that standard. The third, we need to reduce and continue to work on reducing burdensome regulations. We talk a lot about changes to the International Building Code and the International Residential Code, but all of those changes come at a cost, and those costs have to be translated to either reduced units built by developers or higher costs for those that the developers build them for. And finally, as Mike indicated, we have to maintain the viability of our existing stock, which the Rental Housing Safety Program has done a fine job in that direction.
Thank you. And Patty?
Thank you. Wonderful points from Jason and Mike. So I really appreciate that. They expounded on all of the things that the city is currently working on and doing. One of the very first events that I went to was a groundbreaking, and it was between the city and the Home Ownership Center. I believe it's off of Veterans Drive. And that is housing that is looking for that middle block that Mike was talking about. So we have low income, but now we have affordable housing. But affordable housing is $300,000, $400,000. So we'd need to look at more of those type of homeownership opportunities, whether it's a townhome, condo, or a smaller unit, and then also continue to maintain those rentals. There are so many rentals in Lakewood that just, you know, I think a lot of it obviously would be the pandemic. People have sold their homes, and we see this price is skyrocketing. So finding that middle ground, I think, is very, very, very important right now in order for us to ensure that we have housing that is affordable to everyone, no matter what the income is.
Thank you. And for our next question, Mike will be going first, and here's the question. "The extensive business park development along 150th Southwest is an example of economic development that has demolished low-income housing and will increase traffic in an already congested area. Please speak about how you will try to balance low-income housing needs with economic development." And again, we'll start with Mike.
Well, there is a tension between housing needs and economic development. That you need both because the equation of employment and housing is important. So you have to sort of find those areas of where you're going to focus your economic development rather than have it be patchwork throughout the city. And the area in the Woodbrook Industrial Park that you mentioned to was an area that was looked at for many years, and a great deal of infrastructure was invested to include work involving the Port of Tacoma to develop that park so that we would consolidate economic development in a single area and not have it be haphazard throughout the city. We're looking for ways to do that, and I think that the Lakewood Landing Planning and the subarea plans that we have, where we're trying to promote mixed-use development of where housing and commercial development- where we're trying to promote mixed use development of where housing and commercial development will coexist to the benefit of both the residents and businesses and the employees there.
Thank you. And next, Jason, how you how will you try to balance low income housing needs with economic development?
Well, first, as I mentioned, we are excited about being part of a regional consortium that will be looking at these issues on a sort of regional basis, not just Lakewood centric, but also within the South Sound and Pierce County. I'm looking forward to that. But the bottom line, how do you balance these competing interests? It's with good planning, land use planning and zoning. And years ago, when the city incorporated and over the course of time, we have looked at these issues. Of course, we are directed by the Growth Management Act to not only plan for population, but also for business growth and economic development. And that does include industrial lands and light manufacturing lands. And so the Woodbrook Industrial Park was a a long project in the making that was a part of a significant planning process years ago. The effort there was to recognize that it was a an area more ripe than not for good economic development opportunities for warehousing and other light manufacturing and industrial lands that we desperately needed to meet the job opportunity and job targets that we were told we had to plan for under the Growth Management Act. But on the flip side, to balance housing, Mike and Patty and I and and Ria know that the city has done good work in the sub area planning process over the course of the last four to five years, not just with the Central Business District, with the Lakewood Station, the Lakewood Stationary District, but now Lakewood Landing. We know that it's going to take time to bring investment to bear in these areas to develop not just more housing, but more affordable housing. And we hope that those patterns will will bear true to the planning efforts.
Thank you. Patty?
Thank you. So one of the things that I think that we could really, really use and look for would be to how we preserve our open spaces in these economic, these areas that we need to develop economically and that we are taking away that we make sure that it's always accessible to all, but that they have the open space that people need. And that all of those amenities are there for everyone. And the mixed use also helps because it does bring in the retail. It brings in, you know, the different amenities that people need. Maybe it would be a grocery store, maybe it's some sort of meeting center. It's certain stores that people need. So I think that that is very important. And then I think something else that's really important is that we take a look at a lot of our older policies that we have out there that are regulating everything, all of our land use right now. Some of the things we haven't looked at since the city was incorporated. So that is definitely on the council's mind and something that I know that we want to move forward with.
Thank you. And Ria?
Thank you. I agree with Patty. We definitely have to look at some of the policies that may be prohibiting us from progression and innovation in our within our city limits. How would I balance housing and economic development? Really, it's two sides of the same coin. We can't have an extra emphasis on economic development, potentially providing jobs, potentially providing transportation and access to those locations if the people that live in our community are becoming homeless in the process. Yes, I was at the community meeting where we identified Woodbrook as an industrial area. But my main concept was, at the same time, we agree and support that development, we really need to be looking at Habitat for Humanity. And I hate to repeat myself with Habitat for Humanity. Humanity, it's a great concept. It's a great opportunity and I know that we're going there. But given Woodbrook's history of low income, I feel like there should have been more of an emphasis on, you know, preventing displacement. But that's just one example of how you balance economic and housing. Great that there's they're looking at the International District. Great that we're looking at telecom, but really, you know, how can we have investors who want to make sure that we're not doing displacement? How can we have businesses, you know, nothing against warehouses? Yes, the port is great. There's lots of money, but let's talk about employers that want to hire our community members. Let's get those people employed first, you know. Let's not employ our just anybody, but let's have a, you know, intentional focus on our own area.
Thank you. And our next question actually comes from a community member. But before we get to that, I want to remind the audience that you can text questions to this number, two, five, three, nine, four, eight, six, zero, two, nine. Our next question, we'll start with Jason, and this is the question. What specific actions would you take as a council member or promote as full council action to cultivate and increase sense of community among the diverse neighborhoods Lakewood enjoys? So Jason?
Well, I think that encouraging more community wide activities like we had recently with the twenty fifth anniversary celebration where so many different components and residents from throughout our community came together to enjoy Lakewood. And I think that really helps. And I I think also, one thing that I would like to see us do is more and better council communication to the various neighborhoods. We do have neighborhood association meetings. Some of them are more well attended than others. And I think it would be fun to have council go to those neighborhoods and actually have council meetings there as opposed to expecting folks from the neighborhoods to come to City Hall and sit and listen to us and provide good public comments. So I think we can do better in outreach to the community by meeting them at their needs and going to where they are and hold council meetings. There's really no reason why we can't do that. The other thing that I would suggest that we do is we engage as best we can more of our community members, those who would like to serve and those who would like to lead in our community advisory boards and commissions. We have lots of opportunities in Lakewood to serve, and I think what we could do better is to really cultivate a new generation of leadership from all segments of our community so that they all feel that they've got a voice. For example, the International District, for whatever reason, we don't get a lot of participation on our citizen advisory boards and commissions from business owners in the International District. We could do a better job of incorporating their voice, which should be a very strong voice, given their economic impact to the city, as well as other voices throughout the the communities.
Thank you. And Patty?
Thank you. I love this question. This is one of the reasons why I applied to get appointed to the council was to bring a little bit of a different perspective, a little bit of a different viewpoint. I am Mexican and my husband, he's Caribbean. So we do have all of these cultural differences around us all the time. And that is one of the reasons that brought us to Lakewood is that we love the diversity here. I think some things that we could do to improve, I would love a coffee with the council where we get together. We meet people, we talk to the community. I would love to see some video profiles on just regular residents, regular people, kind of like there's a series on Instagram called Faces of New York, where they're just out on the street. You talk to regular people, you find out their story, you see what they're doing. I'd love to see those kind of profiles on residents. I'd love to see profiles on the diversity of our business owners. I would also like to see something like of a series that talks about the different foods of Lakewood. Do a little food trail situation because everybody loves that. And I just think that we could do things that really just bring out all of the cultural differences and celebrate them. I know that council member Moss would love to have a multicultural event. So I think that that is something we will talk about and be looking forward to in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. And Ria?
What specific actions would I do? First note that I put would probably be a quarterly town hall conference call where they just get to where community members just get to speak, no agenda, maybe just build a relationship amongst each other in that format. Events are great, love events, but just kind of looking at different post COVID. I think that's one way to where we could still bring back the era of phone calls. You know, bring back the era of getting to know your neighbor. I'll go out on a limb and mention police and Black Lives Matter. Now, I'm part of a a group, LEPAC, where we're really trying to bridge that gap between the police department and community. And I think I would really just expand upon that. So I just want to give a plug for their work. And also, I am of mixed culture. I'm in the International District all the time. I'm stay international. And so I think really, not only just someone who's genetically disposed to that, but also is able to communicate with that population is just as important. A shout out to the Filipino community. It is the Filipino Heritage Month. I think that's really important to share, you know, with, you know, the city, with you guys and with all community members. Really, it starts with just developing that relationship.
Thank you. And Mike, your turn?
Yes. Well, you know, in terms of specificity of what an individual council member could do, I think there are lots of opportunities to interact with the community and different channels to do that. I believe in making having a really robust interaction with the neighborhood associations throughout. And I think that there are some that are at the moment dormant and looking for working with some leaders in some of those neighborhoods to try to reestablish viable neighborhood associations. The other thing that I am an advocate for is doing more than the minimum in terms of seeking public comment on a variety of issues. State statutes unfortunately specify you must have public hearings. Well, public hearings are are not communication two way. They're 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 one way. And I advocated for there being a more public meetings of where there is conversation that goes on and questions being answered. We actually were successfully with doing that, with visiting DSHS to do that around issues related to Western State Hospital with the Oakbrook Community. And and response from the community to having a chance to actually have dialogue rather than just make time statements was very positive.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Patty, and the question is, are the services for homeless people in Lakewood adequate? Why or why not? And what future plans should the city council make to address the needs of the homeless population? Patty?
Yes, thank you. So right now we are looking at the ARPA dollars. So we're looking at how we can allocate that kind of money. We have great partnerships with a lot of the local cities and of course, the county. And so we're looking at all of those things collaboratively. There is a homeless. There will be a motel. It will be that we are in partnership with that will be housing some homeless and will be working into into turn into housing for them afterwards that they could keep. So I think that when we really look at partnerships around the area and how we can leverage everybody, everybody's dollars, that's the best way, the most cost effective way that we can make our dollars go the furthest. Everybody is hit with this issue. So I think that if we look at it and we work at it collectively, that is where we're going to get the most impact and the most return.
Thank you. Ria?
So are the service for homeless population adequate? You know, that's all in how you define adequate. Patty's right. We got to really look at collaboration opportunities. We talk about, you know, there's dignity in work. So how can we provide opportunities for people who want to work, who may not necessarily be able to get full time employment somewhere? Having an address, a mailing address, it's the number one question on a job application. Tiny homes, you see that where you could make use of your planning, those meetings, and you could talk about, well, what can we do for the homeless in our area? What about open dumpsters? You know, if we give people an opportunity to be clean and have an opportunity to dump their garbage without it being illegal, is that one way that we can protect both our private property and our public spaces? We have already a great program. Can we expand upon it? And that's the police and the mental health collaboration. We know that there need additional services and that it may not necessarily need a police officer, or we may need follow up services. So really looking at every opportunity comprehensively is really how we're going to address that. And we may only be able to help some, but it's really better than none. So I I look forward to those conversations also.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, I think that the general consensus in the community is that the services for the homeless are not adequate. Lakewood's a compassionate community and there's a great deal of desire to do more, to help the homeless. And that includes whether it's homeless families or single individual homeless folks or homeless youth to be able to move beyond that situation into something better for them as they define it. That I think what we need to look at is that we need to be looking for new ideas and ways to do that, not just doing more of what we have been doing because that will just perpetuate the trend of the situation incrementally getting more severe. I'm so I'm I I'm looking for some things to do. We had a group of business owners from the community that that suggested that we need to create homeless services that are mobile and that go to where the homeless are rather than having sites where the homeless can go to get services. And I'm hoping that we will be able to move forward and and pilot some sort of a program in that way with the an appropriate service provider.
Thank you. And Jason?
Thank you. I to answer your question, I'm not convinced that the services for the homeless are adequate yet. I think we're working on it. I was privileged to serve with the president of Pierce College for the point in time count for the homelessness here in Pierce County and Lakewood specifically. And I had a chance to engage with people and actually learn about their stories, why they were homeless. That was one of our questions we had to answer. And it varied with every individual. Some had domestic violence issues that they were part of or were tossed out of their home as a result of. Others just had financial challenges. So it runs the gamut. But, you know, I don't think it involves just throwing money at it, or Seattle would be wildly successful because they've thrown millions and millions at the homelessness issue. And I don't think they've achieved their level of success at all. So it gets to leveraging of partnerships, and I think we've heard a little bit of that. We do invest one percent of our general fund for human services funding with our non governmental partners. And through that, we address many homelessness needs and issues. We have also, as Ms. Bell indicated, committed to invest a million dollars with the city of Tacoma and Pierce County to purchase a motel along Hosmer to have a adequate number of beds. Well, not adequate, but a precise number of beds for Lakewood folks through our investment. We've invested with Lakewood Area Shelter Association. Recently, six hundred thousand, we cobbled together some monies to expand the acquisition of property so that they can enhance and expand their homelessness services. And we also have invested in our mental health. I think homelessness is a direct result of substance abuse and mental health issues for many of them, not all, but for many. And I think we have to, as a community, address those issues before we can adequately address the homelessness issue.
Thank you. Our next question, it sounds like we're getting some feedback there. Please make sure to mute yourselves. Thank you. So the next question, and we'll start with Ria on this one. It's a little bit of a longer question. On average, only thirty nine point seven percent of students entering kindergarten in Lakewood's Clover Park School District demonstrate adequate readiness skills when they first arrive to kindergarten. In contrast, in Tacoma, the average percentage of students demonstrating readiness at entry to kindergarten is fifty five point two percent. Further, there is a wide range in kindergarten readiness in Lakewood with one school reporting fifteen point four percent of students ready for kindergarten at entry, while another school shows fifty three percent of students with adequate readiness. What will you do to ensure access to high quality preschool and early childhood education in Lakewood so that every student can enter school with the readiness skills they need? And we'll start with Ria.
An education question, I'm a little biased because I am and have been a supporter of Kids at Home for since at least two thousand and eight. You know, there's also funding from Washington State for zero to five. I think we've really got to look at that. But really, I mean, I'm going to have to default back to Kids at Home because I know it, I see it, I know it works. I it's in collaboration with Arizona State and the Gallup poll. So we have the data. I, it's in collaboration with Arizona State and the Gallup Poll, so we have the data. It's really about hope, and I know that concept is not necessarily well-received all the time. But, you know, hope boils down to even getting the parents involved and having and holding accountability on all of the people that that child comes across with. From parents, teachers, school bus, to cafeteria workers, to people, you know, in human service or whoever and anywhere that could impact the child's trajectory. I apologize. What's the question? Is it specifically what would I do or how would I address it? The least I could do is mention Kids at Home. The most I could do, you know, really is just advocate at that table that makes those decisions and reminds that there is various reasons why we have in our own community 50% and 53%. And probably, let's talk about the best practices on that 53%. I don't know if it's a Kids at Home school, but we can find out and we could, you know, provide more support to those families that need it.
Thank you. Mike?
Well, I think this is a root cause of that, 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 that very beginning of the educational system that affects students, that has impacts up through the grades and for, for a long period of time. It's a difficult problem to add to, that can be actionable by the city. In, in terms of a role for myself, I'm certainly looking to take a look at whatever city regulations we have that are blocking there being resources to do that. But I think most importantly, the city needs to advocate with the state that, that controls many of the things that are pre, pre, preschool and childcare situations. And in terms of advocating for policies at the state level that will get greater ability for parents to access services that can better prepare their kids, as well as encouraging and making it profitable to enter into that area as a career. So, I, I think it's more, as Ria said, it's an advocacy role that's most appropriate.
Thank you. Jason?
I would agree that it's an advocacy role, one in which we can be, I think, an effective partner and cheerleader with the school district, but it really is a school district balancing of priorities. The, the district has a budget that eclipses the City of Lakewood's budget on an annual basis. And it really becomes a question of priorities. There's a lot of competing priorities with regard to student services in Lakewood. I serve currently as a member of the Community Engagement Leadership Team, which serves as a group of folks in the community that are dedicated to ensuring that there's a caring adult in the life of every child. And that involves direct student support as well as family supports. And I think that we all who are parents, and I have three daughters, my wife and I are blessed to have three almost grown beautiful girls. We have one still in high school. But it really starts at home. And so, to the extent we can provide family supports, so that those kids do have an opportunity to get the best that they can at home. And then certainly be a cheerleader for state support. And we understand that there will be some federal support likely with regard to full-time kindergarten. Coming perhaps down with the, the updated federal budget yet to be passed, that there will be perhaps more funding opportunities. But from a city standpoint, we stand in partnership with our school district with regard to student success. We want that for our students and our families, and certainly because it impacts our communities positively. So, to the extent we can bend the curve with whatever bullhorn we have to help in that regard, we should do that. But it's really a school district priority that we can partner with and help.
Thank you. Patty?
Thank you. I totally agree. We would be a great voice as the city. We are here to advocate, we're here to talk, we are here to listen, we are here to be a part of different committees. And I think creating and fostering the relationship with the school district, looking at the resources from the state and what we can change there would be fabulous. And this also goes back to a previous question on equity. So, we need to look at the locations where these, where people live. We need to look at their socioeconomic status. We, of course, will need to look, maybe they're in and out, maybe they're with the military. So, there, we have a very transient population also. And of course, we need to look at the diversity aspect of everything. And then these play into the resources for the parents. The parents need to also feel supported and have the resources in order to be that better person for their child and support them and get them ready for school and get everybody included, not just subsex. So, I find it, I find it very disheartening that one school reports 15% and another one reports 53. So, I definitely think we as a city and as council members are here to advocate and be a great voice and definitely partner.
Thank you. Our next question, we'll start with Mike. And it is, what do you see as the impact of the end of the COVID-related moratorium on evictions in Lakewood? And what should the city do to promote rental assistance? Mike?
To be honest, I think the impact is uncertain, is going to vary widely landlord to landlord. Some landlords are going to be making the efforts to be able to come to an accommodation with their, their tenants to be able to keep them there. Others are going to move forward with eviction processes and doing that. There is a lot of money for rental assistance out there and to help people from both evictions and foreclosure. That it's, for the most part, it's being administered by the county and the state. And the most important role that the city can do, and we intend to hire staff that can be navigators for folks that need that assistance with how to make these, those applications and find where they can make them. And it's not just with rental or foreclosure, but it also has to do with utilities and some other costs of, of housing that we can help people access because there is plenty of housing and assistance dollars that are out there. If people can just work through the bureaucracy to find it, apply for it, and utilize it.
Thank you. Jason?
The impact of the end of COVID-related evictions, I think, is a bit uncertain because we don't know the volume necessarily of those that are going to be on the short end of the eviction stick. I have to say, in my day job as a lawyer, I do a lot of this work for business owners, for property owners, and on occasion, some tenants. Like Mike indicated, there's a ton of assistance money available. I think what we would like to see and what we are investing, some of our federal Relief Assistance Act monies in doing is providing navigator services to make sure that we can do a better job of connecting resources with the individuals seeking the resources. And having good funding for the navigation of those services is something that we are currently working towards, and I think we're on top of. One of the impacts of the end of the COVID-related evictions, I think people don't realize, is there have been a lot of single-family homeowner investors that have rented their homes, that have been burned by many of the challenges with COVID-related evictions. And what I am seeing is that they are selling their homes because the market is pretty darn hot right now for single-family residential homes. That will result in a, a lesser amount of inventory for renters of single-family homes. And that is not necessarily a good thing. So, to the extent that we've got rental monies available, we need to make sure that both tenants and landlords can avail themselves of those monies so that we don't see declining housing supply, single-family homes, as a direct and proxent result of the eviction challenge and the lack of landlords getting adequate payment for their, their properties.
Patty?
Thank you. So, correct, it's, it's, the impact is uncertain, and that's just not in Lakewood. That is everywhere. In my other, in my day job, I see it all the time, and it's something that we're working through there too. So, that is unpredictable. But what I think we can do is exactly what Jason said. It's provide the resources to both parties, to the renter and to the landlord. And it's also communicating all of those resources. We need to get the information out there. I'll go back to translations. I think it's so important that we put the information out there so everybody can see it that needs it. And then to have those navigators come on to help guide people through. And these would be navigators who would speak other languages and have other cultural backgrounds that would come across and help people. So, they would feel comfortable, they would be, go through the process. Government and all of those forms are, can be very scary. I understand that. So, this would be something that you would have someone with you by your side to help you get those resources that you need, both a renter and a landlord. And I just really think that it's, if that information is pushed out there and we communicate it well, I think that it will decrease the impact of the moratorium.
Thank you. And Ria?
Now, I'm all for jobs, even if it's as low as four navigators. I mean, definitely, that's an opportunity. But, you know, we have a rental program in Lakewood, so I think we should utilize it. And how that program works is really what we decide. And so, you know, just thinking out loud, any eviction in the City of Lakewood really should go through one of these navigators. And if that navigator is able to navigate the bureaucracy behind rental and evictions on behalf of both tenant and landlord, then that might help keep people in their homes and keep income coming in, making sure that the money gets to the right people at the right time. It shows accountability. We may not know what COVID's going to look like, but we know what we have. We know the funding that we have today, and we know that we have people who are scared every single day because they're concerned about being evicted. They may not have jobs. They may, you know, whatever the case may be, we're all dealing with this pandemic individually together. But I think, you know, utilizing the rental program, I think that's a conversation that we really should have is why are we evicting anybody at this particular time? What can we do to support it? Is it a miscommunication? Do you really want to intent to sell? Or are you just really looking for that payment? Because as everybody pointed out, thank goodness for the United States, but they have provided some money to help prevent evictions. Let's just utilize it, thus utilize it accordingly.
Thank you. Thank you. This next one will be our last question this evening, and we'll start with Jason. How will you work with the police department and citizens to ensure that all Lakewood residents can feel safe from crime while at the same time trusting that police do not abuse their power? Jason?
It's a matter of transparency, and I think that we have to ensure not only that our police department is well-trained and well-staffed and well-equipped. We are one of the first jurisdictions in Pierce County that's going to be deploying body cameras and dash cameras in all vehicles for all officers. We believe that will enhance a sense of community transparency and a feeling, hopefully, that community policing is going to be done right. And that the community, to the extent there are issues, will be able, readily able to see what has happened. And hopefully, we can learn from any past mistakes and make things better. But to feel safe, I think we have to continue driving the point forward that it takes all of us in the community, working together. We can't rely on the police department to be everything. They can't be the folks driving around in patrol and arresting folks who are doing silly criminal acts. But we also can't expect our police department to serve as social workers, to serve as garbage collectors, to pick up shopping carts. We can't expect them to be mental health counselors and professionals. We have to continue to leverage partnerships and educate the community that we're all this together. Yes, the police department has a definite role to play, but we all have a role to play too. And by leveraging the partnerships we have through the investment of our human services funding, by ensuring that we have the two mental health professionals embedded in the police department, we can help address the needs that are out there so that our police officers can do the work that they're hired and equipped and qualified to do. And that will increase transparency.
Thank you. Patty?
Thank you. So, one of the things that I really, really appreciate about our police department is that they are very connected to the community. That's something that I would encourage that we keep pursuing. We, a police immersion program, something along those lines, where the police, they go and they meet with these community groups and organizations, they get immersed with them. They spend, you know, three months and it's part of their regular work schedule. So, you really get to know the community, the neighborhoods, the people that you are working with and for. And I think that that creates a real bond. I love that we are one of the first communities in the South Sound to have body cams. I think that those are just a very, very valuable asset for our police department. I would love to see more things where people would have, in essence, a town hall with the police department where the police go to a really easy area, someplace where people feel very comfortable, something that is not in City Hall or anything like that, just for some very casual conversation. And then I think that we need to look at our recruitment efforts for the police department, which I believe they're already doing. Just really opening that up, figuring out different ways to bring other people into the community that I think would just benefit and really add a lot to the community. And I think that recruitment efforts are just a very, very key piece of it. And also, we need to increase, preserve all the things with our human services funding to assist our police department.
Thank you. Ria?
Well, in order to feel safe, I would need to know and believe that we are all held accountable. There's things that we could do. You know, we mentioned recruitment. That's definitely important. But we have to talk about mentorship at a young age. You know, I floated the idea of, you know, building that relationship with 10-year-olds, seniors, high school seniors. But building that relationship, you know, having officers that live in our community, that serve our community, I believe is the easiest way. Because when you start putting a name to a face, they just don't become that person driving the car with the black, with the broken taillight. They become the John that you know, the Mary that you know, the kid that you played basketball with. And may help de-escalate a lot of those situations. So, I know that it's not an easy task. We're asking to build a relationship that has been broken for many generations. It's not going to be easy, but if you're intentional about it, which I believe our police department, there's a lot of opportunity. I'm a big fan of our chief of police, and I think that there's some great opportunities moving forward to really make an impact within ourselves. And so, really just starting off with being accountable, you know, that's one way I could feel safe. Two is really building those relationships so I get to know, we have a community.
You. Thanks. We're out of time. And Mike?
I think the relationship between a community and its public safety systems, the police, its courts, the manner in which code enforcement is, is handled is important, and that the way that you develop confidence is through transparency, but also recognizing that those systems do much good in the community. And that, that maybe needs to be put out there and, and, in the, in the public view and recognized of all the many compliments and positive things that police officers and, and others in our public safety realm play in a role and, and the positive impact that they have on citizens. That, and two, when there is something that happens that is controversial or that needs accountability, that we do need to move forward in doing that. And I'm, and I would venture to say that I believe that the chief and the leadership in our police department do feel that that's, that, that's important. And that they take care of it, the, those sorts of things are perhaps less publicized than and, and they need to be. But it's a, it's a constant effort to maintain that transparency and that, and that confidence.
Thank you. Thank you all. And now it's time for closing statements. Each candidate has up to one minute for their closing statement, and we're changing the Each candidate has up to one minute for their closing statement, and we're changing the order. We'll go in the opposite of ballot order for these statements. So we'll begin with Ria, then Patty, then Jason, then Mike. So let's start. Ria, your closing statement, please.
Thank you kindly. Thank you again, League of Women Voters, for hosting tonight's forum. I appreciate my current city council representatives and the hard work that they do. I appreciate the voters who support me and who are even considering voting for me. It would be an absolute honor and privilege to represent the city of Lakewood in position number five. If you have any questions, concerns, or anything whatsoever, by all means, don't hesitate to reach out. Elected or not, I'm still going to speak up for you today, tomorrow, and for years to come. So thank you kindly for this opportunity to serve.
Thank you. Patty.
Thank you. I want to thank all of you for the opportunity to be here, and it's great. I know two of you, but Ria, it was great to meet you and see you. I have really enjoyed my time here tonight, really be able to talk about something I'm very passionate about, which is our city. And what I can do for it as your Lakewood City Council member in position number five. I really, just some of the things that I do want to focus on that I think are very, very important to me would be increasing the transparency. I think that that is so important in how we communicate out and we talk about our city and we tell our city's story. It is what I do, and so I'm very passionate about it. And I also love that I bring the aspect. Of a little bit of a cultural diversity, a different perspective to everything. And I think that that's so important in this day and age and in any time, actually. So I just want to thank you all for letting me be here, from learning from everybody, having just a wonderful evening. And please vote for me. I would really appreciate your vote, and I look forward to continue serving.
Thank you. And Jason.
Well, thank you to the league, and thank you, Liz, for moderating tonight. I've had a, a good opportunity to listen. And hear great ideas from all of the candidates tonight, and I really appreciate that because I think. More than ever, coming out of COVID, Lakewood deserves leadership that listens. Leadership that has empathy for others in the community that need a little bit more effort. And we talked about that by way of our diversity, equity, and inclusion policies, and we know. That we need to be committed to deliver municipal services in a fair and equitable manner, and I'm committed to doing that. I think leadership for Lakewood in the next 25 years requires not only leadership that listens, but leadership that has honed a good judgment. And has the experience and, you know, the opportunity to really dig into the issues. And start from day one, making as good a decisions as possible for the community. Lakewood has been blessed by really good leadership and stewardship by a solid city council and staff, and I look forward to being part of that for the next four years. So thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you. And Mike.
I do appreciate the, the opportunity that this evening presented. I think that the most important. Aspect that any council member can, can bring to the table is the. Skill in listening. Commitment to integrity. And, and a focus at making sure that you understand the issue that you're trying to decide upon. And understand the views of the community about them. So I'm committed to those things, and I would appreciate the, the support of, of, of voters. Is we could work together to continue to improve the community and make it a great place to live, work, grow.
Thank you. And thank you to our candidates and to our audience tonight. In ballot order, candidates for Lakewood City Council position two are Mike Branstadter and Amelia Isabel Escobedo. For position three are Jason Whalen and Seabona Yuso. And for position five are Patty Bell and Ria J. Covington Johnson. Seabona Yuso and Amelia Isabel Escobedo were unable to join us tonight. You should receive your ballot during the week of October 17th. Be sure to vote early and no later than August, November 2nd. I'm sorry, November 2nd. There is a little glitch in my script there. I would like to thank the candidates who were able to join us, the timekeeper Terry Baker. Tacoma Pierce County League of Women Voters and our community sponsors, the Affordable Housing Consortium, the Asia-Pacific Cultural Center. Black and Indigenous Organizing, Grit City Co-op, Latinx Unidos of South Sound. The NAACP of Tacoma, the South End Neighborhood Council, Sumner Waller Community Association. The Tacoma Urban League, Vibrant Schools, and the YWCA of Pierce County. You can see our League of Women Voter Candidate Forums at www.tacoma pierce l w b.org. Read your voter's pamphlet. Look at vote411.org where you can find answers to questions posed to all candidates running for office. Read the candidates' websites and do all you can to be an educated voter. And don't forget to vote before November 2nd. Thank you for watching this forum, and everyone, please take care.
Thank you. Good night.
Good night.